Good evening. We have a quorum, just barely here, so I'm calling this meeting to order. Welcome. It is Monday, June 17th. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To defy in the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
And David is here. David is here. Mr. Ross, will you please call the roll?
Pastor Moody?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor. Dr. Randles. Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade?
Here.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. LaGranne?
Yes.
Mrs. Lanier? President Faul.
Present. Dr. Randles and Mr. O'Connor are traveling with family right now, and Ms. Lanier just let me know that she is at another event tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Voted. Thank you.
Good evening, President Faul, members of the board. I would like to ask Mr. Wright and Lewis to come forward, please.
Good evening.
Good evening Superintendent Neal, President Faul, and board members. Thanks for having us this evening. I am here to acknowledge that Ottawa Hills High School has his first Gates Millennium Scholar.
All right.
Ms. Tanyie Brown joined our school two years ago as a junior coming in from the Ohio area. She came in with a 3.0 grade point average, which is good, but she's advanced that over the course of the last two years. Tanyie finished with all As her senior year, finished with a 3.5 grade point average, and is all set and ready to go to Michigan State University.
Good job. Good job. There you go. Good school.
Absolutely. Tanyie also was inducted to the National Honors Society here this past year as a senior. So she's done some great things. She's been able to keep up two jobs amongst doing all that academic work, and so she's been very diligent. She's a person that when you see her, she's always got a check-off sheet where she's checking off all her tasks and activities to make sure she gets everything accomplished. But I would like to acknowledge that her grandma, Ms. Martin, is here as well. She'll say a few words, but I'm going to turn the microphone over to Ms. Tanyie Brown at this time.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm very honored to receive the Gates Millennium Scholarship because it makes my life so much easier. I don't have to worry about anything, like, I don't have to worry about any finances or anything of that nature, so I can just focus on my education, which is making college a lot easier and more fun. And also, I want to say, coming to Ottawa with a 3.0, I wasn't doing really good my sophomore year, so my grades weren't as high as they were supposed to be and stuff like that. So winning, it really taught me a lot because it taught me about myself that if I work really hard, I can achieve my goals. If I really put my mind to it, and it taught me a lot about life, that you have to give your all to whatever you want. Also, I just want to say I'm very, very extremely happy. Words can't explain it. It's a lot to take in. I still can't believe it that I won out of all the people that could have won. I won. In a way, I can believe it because I worked really hard, but it's just still amazing to win. About the process, it's eight essays. They had different questions, and it took me about nine weeks to finish the whole entire thing because I took the first week to organize my thoughts and what I was going to write about, and then I took a week to write each essay. So it was a long process, but it wasn't too hard because I broke it all down and did it that way.
Great strategy.
Yep.
Good job. Very good. Good job.
Yes, Tanyie, is my mic on? Tanyie, she has really taught me a lot because I watched her do the work. She's very motivated. She's, like you can see, she's organized. She pushed herself. When she came here, she said she wasn't doing as good as she should have been doing, so she put it in her mind that I'm just going to... She told, I think she said she told people that she was going to get all straight As and she was going to do this and she was going to do that. I watched her. I watched her. I mean, from the time she got up and went to school, she might have got up kind of tired because she would be up half the night writing those papers while she said it wasn't that hard, but she would be up half the night writing those papers every night. And, like I said, like Lewis said, she worked two jobs. So she worked weekends, she worked after school, and she did the work too. I remember one incident that's not very nice, but we were upset because she got a B, I think. And we were trying to discuss it with her teacher, like, she shouldn't have that B. No. It just made her work harder. So, like she said, she put in her mind that if she worked really hard, she did her very best, it was something would come out of it. And I can, like I said, she really has taught me a lot.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
I would. It's like, I would. That's her part.
Well, you know, it all started with a workshop, getting all of our students who qualified to apply for the Gates Millennium, and the willingness of Tanyie to share her story, to be honest about it, to work through the whole process of all of the essays, to have Mr. Penya, our college advisor, read through, check it over, come back, and keep working at it. She truly was an inspiration to many of our students at Ottawa Hills. You think, oh, this is a nationwide, I don't think I can do this. They're never going to pick me. Tanyie, you proved them all wrong, and you set a wonderful example, and we are really proud of you at Ottawa Hills. Thank you. Good luck to you. Love that you're going to be a Spartan, girl.
Good job. Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanyie.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Joy. Slancy.
That's right.
That's right.
Good job.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Faul, this is Weather O'Neill and the board members. It's a pleasure to be here with you to share some more good news coming from Ottawa Hills. Recently, a couple of weeks ago, the Ottawa Hills Boys Track Team captured the Division Two State Track and Field Runners-Up Trophy. It's very significant because it was a team award, which means that there were several significant performances by the young men there. Several outstanding track and field performances along with record-setting and record-breaking performances. And I would like Mr. Lewis and Mr. Marcus Harris to share with you what this honor means to them and what it means for their program.
I'll share a couple opportunities of joy as it represents the men's Boys Track Team. They've done something that, you know, sometimes when you are an alumni of Ottawa Hills High School, you hear the stories of how great they were back in the '80s and the '70s and things of that nature. But this team, the 2013, 12-13 team, has done something that's pretty remarkable. They've done something that hasn't happened since 1951 at our school, and they've been able to compete for a state championship. They were prepared, they were ready, and they went out and performed, and they garnered the runner-up trophy. 1951, we took the title. In 2013, we were runners-up. So the '80s and the '70s, Mr. Johnson, I know you're a great part of some of that tradition. These young men really have set a mark for what's to come. They're a young team. Next year, possibly with a couple of field events put into place and some distance running, we probably will win the state championship next year.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to put any pressure on our coach, but I think we are aligned in the right way to do some pretty great things. Coach Shelman has had a great vision for the program, and we're very pleased to have him, and we're very pleased to have the young men that we have in our stable at the home of the Bengals. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harris. He's going to talk about some of the accomplishments the young men had and talk about some of the things that I'm not sure that the teams from the '80s were able to do, but we did garner some All-Americans this weekend at the national championship.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Faul, Superintendent Weather O'Neill, board members. Just like Mr. Johnson and Mr. Lewis said, it's a tremendous accomplishment, which our track team did this year. Mr. Johnson asked what it means for us, the vision, you know, we want to create state championships. First and foremost, we want to graduate all of our kids. In athletics, we want to win state championships. It's good to win district championships, regionals, quarterfinals, but eventually we want to win state. Some accomplishments, our track team did a heck of a job this year from, this is my fourth year at Ottawa Hills, and in the time I've been there, Coach Shelman has worked very diligently, very hard at creating this track team for the boys. Couple highlights from this year, we finished 4-2 in dual meets. We finished second in the regionals. We finished second in the conference. So I know you're hearing second, 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 but we are going to finish first. The boys were really pumped up, especially after the pep assembly we did, and already they're saying we're taking first next year. So we finished second and third in the 100 meter at states. We had seventh place in 110 hurdles. Sam Beal, who you'll be hearing from for years to come, placed third in the 200. He broke the 200 meter record at Ottawa Hills. We also had 400 meter, placed second. The 4x200 were state champs, so that included Sam Beal as well, which I have some more good news from him. 4x100 took second place at state. Our 1600 meter relay took second, and our 800 meter relay, like I said, took first place and broke the school record as well. We also had Tealan Avery, who just graduated. He's the new 100 meter champ at Ottawa Hills. Along with the tremendous accomplishments with the state championship, is also some of our boys had an opportunity to participate in the national meet over this past weekend. It was called the New Balance National Outdoor Meet, and we had our 4x200 meter relay team place six, which means the top six made All-American. So we had, we got All-American athletes at Ottawa Hills. So Sam Beal, who's going to be a junior next year, he's going to try out for the World Youth Games on June 25th and 26th in Chicago. He makes this team, he's going to be representing the USA team ages 17 and under.
That's amazing.
So that team is going to go to Russia in July, so we're going to, hopefully, Sam Beal, I know he's going to make it, so. So that was great for our track team. Did a wonderful job. Coach Shelman worked hard. Here's a championship trophy.
All right. Good job.
So this will be in the trophy cases. We're in the process of ordering a banner, so Boys Track did a wonderful job this year. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Good job. Good job.
Just like to say in closing, really thank you to the support of the board because the extracurricular program could not happen at the levels that it did without their support, and really the support of Ms. Neal, who really is championing a lot of our athletic programs in terms of backing us and getting us what we need and being able to really expand and do the things that we need to do for students to create those opportunities. So if it wasn't for you, we wouldn't sit on this side of the table. So we really appreciate you supporting the programming that happens with the students here. And yes, after 32 years, my name comes off the record.
Quite a record. Well, it looks like our student representatives are probably off on their summer activities at this point. So we have no cards for public comment on board agenda items, so we are on to the secretary's report. Mr. Ross?
Just a significant note, obviously, there's a board seat vacancy based on Ms. Lanier's resignation effective June 30th. So the board is definitely looking for candidates to fill that seat. Applicants should submit a resume and a letter of intent explaining why they're seeking the office, why they believe they're qualified, what experience they have with GRPS and public education. Obviously, candidates need to be citizens of the United States, registered to vote, and live in the GRPS district. All applications are due by noon on Wednesday, July 3rd, 2013, and those can be sent via email to boeapplications@grps.org. Boeapplications@grps.org, or email to the district office, BO Box 117.
Thank you. Superintendent's report. Ms. Neal?
Thank you. I'd like to invite Lynn Affendulis up from the Student Advancement Foundation. And I should add that the support of the Student Advancement Foundation, as well as some of our donors, that's the reason we have such a great athletic program. It really has been a five-year commitment to the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and so we've been able to build that, and now we see some of the fruits of our labor in that program.
Yeah, it makes this work so rewarding. Boy, I tell you, one of the many things. I am delighted to be here to introduce to you, not that many of you need an introduction, but on the first official day of her job as the new Executive Director of the Student Advancement Foundation, Michelle Sahavsky. And we are just delighted that Michelle is taking over for Susan Hartwell, who leaves a big footprint and big shoes to fill, but we have the right candidate, the right person right here to do that. Michelle was with what was formerly known as VSA, Very Special Arts, now Artists Creating Together, for a little more than 10 years, and really grew that, I think I'm right about that, really grew that organization significantly, both in impact and in size and scope, and came to the Student Advancement Foundation after a pretty significant search. We had a number of candidates, and we really vetted them on their ability to understand the district, the students, philanthropy in this community, that was an important one, and a number of other qualities and experiences that we were looking for, and her name rose to the top. We had a search committee that consisted of people from the Student Advancement Foundation Board, as well as one or two people outside of the organization. And she was the unanimous selection and began transitioning with Susan, oh, in the last three weeks, I would say, correct?
The last three weeks, yep.
And then, so it's been a very smooth transition, a nice process, and today is her first day, and we are just delighted and really feel like the Student Advancement Foundation is in very capable hands, which is a great feeling. So, Michelle, if you want to have a few words?
Yeah, you know, as so many of you know, I believe so strongly in our students here in Grand Rapids, and I'm a proud resident of the city and believe so strongly in our schools and the teachers in our schools, and to be able to work with the SAF and really provide opportunities to our students so they have all of the experiences that they need to, whether they're track stars or Gates Millennium Scholars or students that just learn to love running or reading or the arts, I think we all win in the long run. So I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
For the transformation plan, I'd like to ask Ken Clumparents to come up and share a few points.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's summer, so we're well underway. Things going on right now on transformation stocking actually started back in April. It's moving along very well. Just a few things we're putting in stocking is an elevator, new restrooms, a new kitchen, and we are flip-flopping the office and the media center, if you remember where those were, so we can have a secure entry into the building. We can actually route people into the lobby and control access to the building after some of the incidents that's happened in schools in the past years. That's a very important thing, we think. In May, we started work at Central for the Academy Design and Construction and the Robotics Program, moving into the old gym, and then last Monday, we started other work in there. A week ago, we started in Creston with new flooring in certain spots, and especially the office, and we started the restroom work in Gerald R. Ford. And then this morning, we started the walls in Sherwood and in Aberdeen. While a lot of us were at graduation, Fred Finn had a crew working all that day clearing out Gerald R. Ford to get ready for the work, and then there will be another crew working this weekend to clear out Campaw and make those moves happen. And ongoing with that, with supply, is moving the media centers, and then MIS moving all the technology that has to happen. So we've got a good jump on this summer.
It's really nice to hear you talk about getting stocking up and running.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's nice to have.
Actually, stocking, we got such a good head start right now. That's the least of our worries. That's moving on really well.
That's so fantastic.
Busy summer for you.
It will be. We'll be ready.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Faul.
We have two action items tonight. The first is the Budget Amendment Three, which the Finance Committee has sent forward for approval. Do I have a motion to approve Budget Amendment Three?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Any discussions or questions regarding Budget Amendment Three? Mr. Ross, would you please call a vote?
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
And President Faul?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Our second action item is our budget proposal for the following year. We've had quite a bit of time having this presented to us. It went through Finance, and it is now here for our approval. Do I have a motion to approve the budget proposal for 2013, 2014?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Questions? I have, I have just one here, and it's regarding the staff reduction. I know there's been some confusion as to what staff reduction there has been due to the transformation plan, what staff reduction there has been due to projected enrollment decline, and what is due to the ending of the SIG grants. So I thought it would be very helpful to hear what those numbers are and what staff is being laid off and what we're planning and how that breaks down.
Julie Davis is going to come up with the numbers, but I also would just explain that we are, it's still a moving target, but for the most part, we have them all. We are looking at the numbers, not only of projections, we're getting back information from parents of where students are going to attend school, and so it's going to be somewhat of a fluid number. Not very fluid, but I just want you to, these are not written in stone.
Sure. Absolutely. Well, let me address the first question. It was the number of teaching positions that we were going to lose as a result of the transformation plan, and we're looking at about 12 positions. The other one was how many because of the enrollment decline, and that was about 14 teaching positions. The total number of SIG positions that we're losing because of the conclusion of that funding, it's approximately 93 positions for next year, and that ranges from classroom teachers to coaches to our, we have some data support specialists, some family support specialists, so there's a variety of positions that were funded by the SIG grant. I'm sorry, how many were those? 93 from the SIG. Okay. And then there were other positions that are being reduced. We spoke at the last board meeting about our special education program and making sure that we're running, our models are running to best meet the needs of our students with IEPs. So we have another, other positions related to that, some of our ancillary staff, which would include social workers, speech pathologists, those types of positions, our staff who are non-certified teachers, our employment training specialists, which also work with our students with IEPs as well. So those were just other positions that are also being reduced. And then one of your other questions, I'm sorry, I'm just reading from your list here, was the process for determining which staff is laid off and which will be retained, and we will be following our contracts, which is primarily based on seniority, other than the exception of our GREA staff who are tenure-eligible. We're following our newly adopted board policy. Okay. Right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Short notice. Any other questions regarding the budget?
Actually, just one, this is, I mean, it is budget-related, but the 93 SIG positions, that's a fairly big loss in terms of, I know that that was through SIG funding, which is running out or ran out, but I know that there was a lot of good work done by the people who were in those positions, so hopefully we can get others to kind of fill that gap in other ways.
And because it's 93 positions, it doesn't mean that it's the 93 people. It's the positions.
Right.
Right? So there's a whole process, and that's where I said it is a fluid process.
Right, okay.
There's no other questions? Mr. Ross, you can call the vote.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
And President Faul?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Our second action item is our budget proposal for the following year. We've had quite a bit of time having this presented to us. It went through Finance, and it is now here for our approval. Do I have a motion to approve the budget proposal for 2013, 2014?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Questions? I have, I have just one here, and it's regarding the staff reduction. I know there's been some confusion as to what staff reduction there has been due to the transformation plan, what staff reduction there has been due to projected enrollment decline, and what is due to the ending of the SIG grants. So I thought it would be very helpful to hear what those numbers are and what staff is being laid off and what we're planning and how that breaks down.
Julie Davis is going to come up with the numbers, but I also would just explain that we are, it's still a moving target, but for the most part, we have them all. We are looking at the numbers, not only of projections, we're getting back information from parents of where students are going to attend school, and so it's going to be somewhat of a fluid number. Not very fluid, but I just want you to, these are not written in stone.
Sure. Absolutely. Well, let me address the first question. It was the number of teaching positions that we were going to lose as a result of the transformation plan, and we're looking at about 12 positions. The other one was how many because of the enrollment decline, and that was about 14 teaching positions. The total number of SIG positions that we're losing because of the conclusion of that funding, it's approximately 93 positions for next year, and that ranges from classroom teachers to coaches to our, we have some data support specialists, some family support specialists, so there's a variety of positions that were funded by the SIG grant. I'm sorry, how many were those? 93 from the SIG. Okay. And then there were other positions that are being reduced. We spoke at the last board meeting about our special education program and making sure that we're running, our models are running to best meet the needs of our students with IEPs. So we have another, other positions related to that, some of our ancillary staff, which would include social workers, speech pathologists, those types of positions, our staff who are non-certified teachers, our employment training specialists, which also work with our students with IEPs as well. So those were just other positions that are also being reduced. And then one of your other questions, I'm sorry, I'm just reading from your list here, was the process for determining which staff is laid off and which will be retained, and we will be following our contracts, which is primarily based on seniority, other than the exception of our GREA staff who are tenure-eligible. We're following our newly adopted board policy. Okay. Right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Short notice. Any other questions regarding the budget?
Actually, just one, this is, I mean, it is budget-related, but the 93 SIG positions, that's a fairly big loss in terms of, I know that that was through SIG funding, which is running out or ran out, but I know that there was a lot of good work done by the people who were in those positions, so hopefully we can get others to kind of fill that gap in other ways.
And because it's 93 positions, it doesn't mean that it's the 93 people. It's the positions.
Right.
Right? So there's a whole process, and that's where I said it is a fluid process.
Right, okay.
There's no other questions? Mr. Ross, you can call the vote.
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. LaGranne?
Yes.
President Faul?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you to the administrative team for the work on the budget. Next is the consent agenda grouping. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support?
Support.
Call the vote. Mr. Ross?
Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. LaGranne?
Yes.
Uh, President Fall?
Yes.
Consent agenda, motion passes six-zero.
Thank you. We have no discussion items on the agenda, we do have one card for public comment, and that is, uh, Mr. Weingarten?
Wendy, Wendy, I wanna have discussion, just a brief point after he's done.
Good evening. We, we have, uh, three minutes, would you like a one-minute warning?
Um, I think I should be done.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I wanted to let you know about an innovative program introduced sometimes, some time ago in schools across the United States. It helps boost academic achievement and personal development of many of our children. The positive outcomes from this initiative are being felt far beyond each student, what each student may accomplish during the school day. I feel it will benefit each child individually and our community as a whole. The program is simple, costs nothing to implement, and requires no paperwork. Each morning before class begins in earnest, there is a school-wide moment of silence, where each chi- child can participate in quiet reflection, meditation, prayer, um, personal introspection. This enhances his or her self-image, and has a powerful positive effect on the child's schoolwork and life outside the classroom. Um, in this moment, the teacher does not give any input, rather, the school encourages the parents to have an open discussion with their children about what they should contemplate during this brief moment of silence. Just a few minutes of talking with a child about the things in life that are important will result in a greater of, degree of interaction within the family, and positive reinforcement both at home and at school. In schools where children have participated in a moment of silence for just six months, there's been seen greatly improved reading scores, and better all overall attention during the day. Besides the academic benefits, these quiet moments allow children to reflect on our laws of justice and morality, and what they need to become compassionate human beings and responsible citizens. I'm hoping that the incoming school year, the program can be tried in schools that wish to do so. According to Michigan law, uh, the school board may set a policy facilitating this.
Thank you, Mr. Weingarten.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent, comments?
I would like to, um, take this opportunity to thank Paul Helder and Renee Joe and the Grand Rapids Public Schools negotiating team. Um, we have a district calendar for next year, and this is the first time in six years that we've had a calendar this early. Hats off to them for sticking at it.
The parents, thank you, I know that.
It really is thanks to the team. Um, they came together as a family, and it was just really a great thing to get that done, so, um, thanks to Paul and to the GRPS team.
Great. Dr. Baker?
Yeah, I thought we, um, at the last meeting, we discussed a, uh, our July schedule, and since our July schedule has changed, I thought we should mention publicly what that schedule's gonna be.
Thank you. Um, yes, uh, we had, uh, we now have a new, newly scheduled meeting on July eighth, I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
Um, Monday, July eighth, the board will be convening a special work session in which to review the applicants for the BOE position, and to set criteria, and the interview questions that we will, on the following Monday, um, be interviewing the candidates and, um, going through that criteria. Thank you, so.
And so the time, the meeting times?
Um, catching me off guard here, on Monday, the eighth, I believe we will be meeting at four-thirty, our work session time, and as well as the fifteenth, we will be convening at four-thirty for the business portion of the meeting, and once that is concluded, we'll break shortly and reconvene to interview the candidates. Thank you.
Thanks.
Board member comments? Pastor Moody?
I'd just like to, uh, um, say welcome to our new, um, Student Advancement, uh, not Student Advancement, the, uh, Student, uh, Student Advancement Foundation, I just want, welcome to your new position. Uh, I know Susan Hartwell, so I know that, uh, you would do well in her shoes, of course you'd be welcome in your own. And to the Ottawa Hills High School, um, athletic team, and to the young lady who, um, received the award for her academics, uh, pray that they will continue to do well in both areas.
Now, welcome aboard, Michelle, it's great to have you on, on our behalf, and so, um, thanks a lot, and, um, we'll see y'all in July.
Uh, go Bengals, that's about it.
Mr. LaGranne?
I'm coming.
I just want to encourage, um, not, not only applicants, um, interested in the position, but I want to encourage everybody else out there to encourage somebody you know that would make a good applicant. I think often, often the best superintendents didn't put themselves forward to be superintendents, just as the best Board of Ed applicants might not put themselves forward, but need encouragement from someone, so please go out and do that. Uh, have a safe holiday and meeting adjourned.